I'd like to welcome each of you to the Wilson County Commission meeting, November the 15th, 2021. Welcome all of our guests and ask you to come back anytime you have an opportunity. Before we do the prayer and pledge, Commissioner Ash, I'm going to introduce to Commissioner Walker to introduce some of our guests in the back.
Yes, sir. We have some visitors tonight. We have Cub Scout Pack number 253 from Stoner Creek Elementary. That's business tonight. But he wanted to have you with us.
Thank you. This time for our, yeah, okay, let's give him a round of applause. This time I introduce Commissioner Ash for our prayer and pledge, and he said to tell you, thank you for all the cards and texts and phone calls during the passing of his brother. He really appreciates that.
Thank you, Mayor. A little hoarse tonight. If all the veterans are on the county commission, ones that are veterans, would y'all please stand and come up front, please? If, if there's someone in the audience who wore the uniform, United States of America, would you give us the honor of standing, please? Let's give them a hand, guys. Y'all would, y'all would remain standing just for a minute. If you have had a loved one, a family member, someone who served in the United States military, just stand up. If you've got a friend or a loved one who's served in the military, stand up. Now we're all standing together. Thank you for the many women who served. And y'all, if y'all would remain standing, it's hard for an Army guy to ask a Marine guy to say the prayer, but I'm going to Commissioner Kurtz and Staff Sergeant Rich will say the pledge, please.
Lord loves us all the same, Sheriff. Play with me. Heavenly Father, how blessed we are to look around this room, Father, and see how we all are affected by those that, that want to stand up and give a little or give a lot for our country, Father. And it's just what you expect out of us is giving it all to you, Father. Father, we are the most blessed country in the world, and it's evident with the blessings that we have, the goodwill of our people, the volunteers that we have, and even in a divided time, Father, please help us remember it's all about you. And just watch over this commission, watch over the people in this room, Father. We love you and your son, Jesus, we pray. Amen.
If y'all would follow me in the pledge to the United States of America.
Pledge, ladies and gentlemen.
...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Ash, and thank you all for your service to our country. This time, if we will press yes on the panel, we'll record your presence at tonight's meeting. All of them there. Everybody's present, 25 and 0. Report from the steering committee, Commissioner Patton.
Yes, the steering committee met last Thursday night, Thursday night. Minutes are in your packet. I move that they be received and filed.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Adoption of the agenda?
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There is no consent agenda, to my knowledge. There is no public hearing for it not either, to my knowledge. Is that correct? First time? Special recognition at this time. I'd like to call on Mr. Commissioner McFarland.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the commission and friends and neighbors, we have a resolution tonight honoring some special people that work in our archives. Ms. Lynn, if you'd bring your volunteers forward, please.
As they come forward, I would like to say thank you to these volunteers. I've been down there and watched them work, and they do an outstanding job and do it almost every day. I don't think she lets them come on Sunday, but, but they're there.
Ladies, just come out on up. Honored to stand here with you. If we were in the military, we'd say attention to orders, but if everybody paid attention to our resolution. Resolution to Boone County Commission, Wilson County, Tennessee, honoring Whereas the Wilson County Archives was established in 1995 under jurisdiction authority of the Public Records Commission. Whereas the Wilson County Public Records Commission was created pursuant to Tennessee Code Amendment 10-7-411 and consists of seven members with the authority to oversee the preservation and authorize destruction of old public records as defined by state law within the jurisdiction of the commission. And whereas the Wilson County Archives serves as a custodian for county records, preserving these records for future use of Wilson County citizens and Wilson County office owners. Whereas Linda Grandstaff, who serves as Director of Wilson County Archives, and whereas the Wilson County Archives cannot operate such an open and successful public service without volunteers, volunteers who donate their time and effort to preservation of older county records. Whereas these volunteers clean, organize, index the numerous county records, making these records available quickly with easier access. Whereas it is estimated that volunteers we honor this evening have given 35,544 hours to the Wilson County Archives, which is paid in perennies at $10 an hour, which would equal to $355,440, which is substantial. Whereas it is fitting to properly, the honor, properly honoring volunteers who have served to continue and continue to serve for 10 years more at the Archives as volunteers. Therefore, being resolved by the Canada Bureau of Commissioners, Wilson County, Tennessee, that we honor the following volunteers: Shirley Wilson, Lee Atwood, 22 years; Shirley Wilson, 23 years; Catherine Nolan, 22 years; Aretha Oakley, 19 years; Evelyn Lannan, retired after serving 20 years; Catherine Brown, deceased, 20 years; Richard Atwood, deceased, 10 years, for their dedication and service and commitment to serve the public by volunteering their time and effort to the Wilson County Archives. But further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to each volunteer or member of their families with heartfelt gratitude and appreciation, and copy be presented to the Wilson County Records Commission for display at the Wilson County Archives. Move to proof.
All in favor, say aye.
Let's, let's present them out. There you are. Ms. Lynn, do you want to say anything? I'm sorry. Okay, okay. Let me give you the rest of them. You need to say anything? Okay, let me step out of the way.
Well, first of all, I'd like to say we've got a public records committee that's been very supportive, and they hear good things about the archives, about the volunteers. I'd like to just let you know the members on there, and they can stand if they're here, is Judge Tatum, myself, Jerry McFarland, Annette Stafford, Jim Goodall, chairperson, Martin Frost, if you all will stand, and Jackie Murphy. They're here to also give their appreciation for the volunteers, as well as myself and my assistant over here, Judy Harris, is also fills in when I'm not there. And I have a certificate for each one of them. This is for Shirley Wilson, for 23 years. She couldn't be here. She had a conflict tonight that didn't work out. Lee Atwood, 22 years. Catherine Nolan, 22 years. Aretha Oakley, 19 years. And then I had Evelyn Lannan had retired because of her health. She was with me 20 years. Catherine Brown passed away. She was with me 20 years. And Richard Atwood, which was Lee's husband, he was with us 10 years. And let me tell you, it's like family when you have people like that that's so dedicated. And it was way over 100 years, if you count all the years that they've put in for the archives. And there's no way I can show them enough appreciation, because they have been dear and precious as friends, as well as dedicated to doing the job. In fact, they do a better job, I think, sometimes than paid employees. So, thank you all.
We have lots of good folks in Wilson County employees, but, and people that do a great job of running their office, but nobody runs it any better than Ms. Grandstaff, and she does a fantastic job where she's at. Thank you. This time, the pool for minutes committee, Commissioner Bishop.
The minutes committee met on November the 4th at the courthouse with all committee members present. The minutes of the vice commissioner meeting were discussed and some minor changes were made. Those minutes, as approved, were in your packet. And I make a motion that this report be received and filed.
Got a motion in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Read you the minutes.
Make a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This time, I'd like to ask Mr. Jason Johnson to come forward, and he is our Director
Evening, Commissioners. Good evening, 253. Glad to have you all here. I see right there. First off, I want to thank Mayor Hutto. I want to thank my Tourism Committee Chair, Subenata, for kind of giving me a little bit of time here to check in with you guys and say hey. I won't take long, I promise. First thing I want to talk about real quickly is economic impact numbers. The Tennessee Department of Tourism Development, several weeks ago, released the 2020 Economic Impact Report of Travel and Tourism in Tennessee. And with most all reports that happened in 2020, no one opened this expecting to have some fantastic reading. I'll say that, I'll be honest. I will say, though, looking at the report, we did get some really positive notes. Wilson County had a 24% drop in visitor spending. Not great, but compare that to Tennessee, and we outperformed that because they were at 32%. Compare that to the nation, and they were at 42% in visitor spending. So we outperformed the nation and the state of Tennessee average. Wilson County has now moved up in rank. We are now ranked 12th in customer, in visitor spending out of 95 counties in Tennessee. And out of the top 15 counties in visitor spending, we only have the third smallest decrease rate. Basically, what this means is we weathered the storm. Tennessee weathered the storm better than a lot of places in our country, and Wilson County weathered the storm better than a lot of other counties in Tennessee. Why? Our assets, due to our assets. We have state parks. We have places like Fiddler's Grove and Breeden's Orchard, and we have the Main Street Merchants in downtown Lebanon. We have the places that people sought after, and they still look for now. Open spaces, fresh air, you know, not crowded, something they can feel safe going to. So it's our assets. Next is our practices. It was due to our practices. Safety, cleanliness, health. We're front of mind at the Expo Center, at the James E. Woodag Center, and most all of our local merchants. That was important at that time. And thirdly, it was due to the fact that as a tourism department, we could continue our digital marketing, our social media efforts. We could continue our voice as there were a lot of people that could not do that. They kind of closed up shop on their digital marketing, closed up shop on that. So we were able to keep our voice out there. We were able to continue. We were able to get in places that we weren't before with our voice and plant those seeds. So those seeds are planted. How are they growing now? STR reports, which is our hotel reports that we get monthly, show that Wilson County has had occupancy rate in our hotels of over 75% for the last eight months. That peaked in July at 85%. That 85% peak translates into July's lodging tax report at over $281,000 for the month of July. We outperformed, and we continue to outperform with our occupancy every county around us. Davidson County, Sumner County, Rutherford County, we have a higher percentage in occupancy than any of those. And that's with three new hotels that we've built in the last year and a half, which is about 400 rooms. Three new hotels on the way in the next year. So it's looking good on occupancy tax, for sure. What's going on with tourism right now? Well, as always, we're continuing to grow and develop more strategies for digital, for online, for our social media, and continue that effort. Our Facebook, our Instagram, Google Analytics, all of our stats are just climbing every day. It's amazing what's going on with that right now. We're actually just rolling out next week a new landing page for our website, a Wilson Wonderland. It's going to basically be all things Wilson County and holidays. So go right to that page. You'll be directed to our drive-through light displays, and our Christmas tree farms, and our small business Saturday shopping. Everything that has to do with the holidays will be right there in one spot for them to see. In addition to that, our relationship with the Nashville Super Speedway is fantastic. We talk pretty much on a weekly basis. I know their recent partnership with ASM Global, I don't know if anyone saw that. That's a major entertainment experience partnership deal that they did. In addition to that, they were just acquired by Speedway Motorsports. Between those two things going on and speaking with track president out there, Eric Mosnitzal, a lot of great things and a lot more things coming to our track out there in Gladeville, and I'm excited about that for sure. We're looking into events that kind of go tandem with a lot of things that the state has going on, a lot of their initiatives. In doing that, we can basically get more bang for our buck by going to the state and saying, if you have this initiative going, we've got this going. We'd like some help for the buy-ins, things like that. For example, Fish Tennessee. Fish Tennessee is an initiative that invites anglers from all over the world to come visit the unique fishing and experience unique fishing that we have in Tennessee. With that, we're speaking with Proper USA for a Major League Fishing Tournament sometime in 2023 and possibly 2024. So we've got fishing tournaments coming along with that. Tennessee Music Pathways. We've got three for sure. We've got the Capitol Theater, Cedar Grove Cemetery, which is the burial spot of Curly Putman. He was a fantastic man. If anybody ever met him, he was great. And we're working with the Tennessee Department of Tourism Development to get a dedication date set for the Charlie Daniels mural at Charlie Daniels Park in Mount Juliet. That's definitely one we're working towards hard now that they're opening back up, you know, for the dedications. Basically, we're just continuing to let everyone know, be it event planners, tourists, visitors, even citizens and residents, that Wilson County is the place to be. It's a good idea for a license plate. You might want to think about putting those out there. Lastly, real quick, I just want to give some intros. You guys have seen me a little bit. I appreciate that. I want to give basically faces to the names that I have with my tourism department. So Caitlin Vale, if you could stand for a second, please. Thank you, Caitlin. Caitlin Vale is our administrative assistant. Since she came on about a year and a half ago, she has been absolutely irreplaceable. We had a lot of, lot of logistics and a lot of paperwork with the COVID relief fund and then CARES Act and all that, and she handled that like a champ. And as of recently, she's pretty much taken the lead on our Paint Local Mules initiative that continues throughout the county and tremendous success with that. And Wendy Amber, she is new to our office. She started about a week ago as our new marketing director. Already seeing amazing things out of her and really looking forward to seeing what fresh ideas she brings to kind of take our social media and our marketing to the next level. So thank you both so much for all you. Markiell, Tourism Commissioner for the state, said at the governor's conference a few weeks ago when we attended, that tourism is real money. Tourism brings an economic impact into the community, just as logistics, just as manufacturing does. It is real money into the county. I want to thank you all for the opportunity to not only showcase my county, which I'm proud of, but the opportunity to bring real money into our county as well. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jason. This time, I'd like to introduce Commissioner McFarland and Mr. Tom. Mr. Tom is coming. I will add these two things right quick. Ms. Linda Robinson was appointed to the Parks and Recreation to fill Mr. Jim Griffin's spot there. There's no vote necessary on that one. Term expires September 2024. And then Mr. Terry Gray to fill the unexpired term, Mr. Clayton Gray, who resigned from the Guard Utility District. No vote needed there. Just need to get him in the minutes. Mr. McFarland?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, this is a kind of an informational briefing, if you will. It's not the Tom and Jerry Show. I know everybody's hearing that, but it's kind of an informational briefing. What we've seen, Tom is our planning director, and I chair the Planning and Planning Committee of the commission, and what we've seen in the commission, I'll give you much input from all of you, is that the land use plan that Tom has master planned, we keep having to do that because of growth we've had in the county. And so, you and I worked together, and a lot of you giving me input on this, to update where we are. And let me tell you, the assumptions and presumption here, all the, that kind of data is still valid, but it's kind of behind as far as knowing what's happening across residential and, and commercial. So I've asked Tom, and he has, he's got a map updated now. The, the planning commission has adopted that, so it's now official. We, the commissioners, the commission, have given him an additional position. We did it last year budget. He's recruiting, allowed to get somebody to, to update it. And I'd just like to share a few things, what we need to do, all of us, and that is to give him input. We're caught up with the map, but give him input where we'll see where we're going the next three or four or five years. This panel was developed in 2006, and it's kind of, kind of behind, if you will, but this is where we are. And if, and that's a different map from one that Jimmy showed.
This is actually not where we, this is, this is the pre-existing map.
Okay, jump in here, Tom.
All right. I'm going to go over here.
Sure, sure.
What this map is showing is the current land use plan disbursement, which is a planned residential area in the Gladeville area, to coincide with what was adopted in the growth plan before I got here in 2001, and then re-adopted in 2013 with South Wilson, Planned Growth Area along Main Street and Gordon. It did have, the current land use plan did have gateways, both at Castle Pike and Sturridge.
Need a microphone.
Give a high note here. So the current plan did have gateways in it, which is this land use plan. It also has language and textual direction in it. But we had gateways, I probably will miss one of them, but we had gateways at 109, at Castle Pike, at Sturridge Ferry Pike, at Watertown, at Tucker's Crossroads. And I'm missing one, but anyways, you kind of get the point. We had some gateways that, based on our analysis in 2006, and so these are probably the best areas that we can accommodate oncoming growth and commercial development. That's important for a county. Revenue is important. Sales tax revenue is important. Jobs production is important. Probably in, with mixed results on some of the impacts, our best success story is probably in the Gladeville and Castle communities in terms of recruiting new jobs, as well as trying to take an existing rural crossroads and develop it into a small town using the bones that are there. It had, it had an old main street area, if you will, down, down Sturridge Ferry Pike. We've worked to reinforce that and, and kind of solidify that by allowing for public sewer to be extended down through the commercial corridor on Sturridge Ferry and get some of the old commercial that was on set hooked onto public sewer, as well as some of the major civic institutions that are down there, such as Gladeville Baptist Church, the schools, the fire station, the post office, you know, different buildings, Wilson Bank of Trust, Dollar General, and things like that. So anyways, that's sort of where, from whence we came. I want to point out some strengths around here. This is, these are two pipelines, and this is significant. This is something the state legislature did just this past year. They basically adopted a law that requires local government to require development to notify the pipeline users of these two national pipelines in the national pipeline database. If you are within 600 feet of the line, so that, if you multiply that twice, it's actually 660 feet. If you multiply that, it's roughly a quarter-mile swath in two places going through Wilson County, that if you also kind of overlay where growth is occurring, it, it is hitting us right in the middle of where we've got a lot of residential growth and a lot of commercial growth. So that, that bears watching. It effectively was the state legislature, for lack of a better word, establishing a quarter-mile wide easement that people have to check with the pipeline users before they establish additional development. It's not going back on stuff that's already there, but stuff that's new. So I just want you guys to be aware of that. The state legislature did that in the last, last legislative session. Yeah, we want just a second. This is, this is the, the planning regions for Lebanon and Mount Juliet and Watertown. Respectfully, within the city limits and the planning regions, our land use plan does not take precedence. The city of Lebanon, city of Mount Juliet, and Watertown will. Now, if you would, for showing what we've adopted more recently, we'll see what they grow. It was most visible here. Turn it off and turn it back on so I can see it again. There's some right here. These, what we've done is we've adopted in everywhere that, that was either legacy zoning or new zoning that has occurred outside of the land use plan within Wilson County. The only exception being like here at the corner of Central Pike, near where Dollar General is. We do have a busy corner provision that's in here that is in compliance with the land use plan. But some of this, up 231, is stuff that the county commission and or the planning commission in their wisdom has chosen to change. It's either legacy, or the county commissioner and planning commission has chosen to rezone it outside of the land use plan in recent years. And the call that I got as an initial step was just go ahead and take that as a low hanging fruit and establish that into the land use plan that we had. So effectively, we have done that. The planning commission has adopted it, and this effect is your land use plan as now. Would you like to add, Jerry?
Let me wrap up here.
The blue is flood plain, just for, for, you can zoom in to the Gladeville, it might be, give them a better example.
The reason we're here to share with you is that if you can go down to Colton Ferry Pike and, oh, Lord, Colton Ferry Pike and Curbin Road, please. If you go out somewhere in the county where there's a rural road, they don't need a corner market. But this particular area of the, where, where is, okay. That, that area is a corner that has cars, four lanes, four, not four, road lanes, but four different areas going to it and leaving every day. Ideal place, it's in my district, ideal place for a corner market. Get your gas on the way to work, get your milk, and you come home, perhaps. I'm giving this as an example. So basically, what we're kind of sharing with you is, Tom's going to be going through the drill to get input from us, from the public, from the commission, everybody, to try to look into the future and say, well, this area here needs to kind of be looked at as a future growth area for commercial, and this over here does not. And that's basically what I wanted to share with you guys. Like, we just need to look at futuristic, so we don't keep violating and violating, violating the existing land use plan. Tom, you'll wrap it up here.
Yeah, not that.
But just as example of the kind of things we're going to be doing, Jared mentioned that this is a by on the ground. It looks like an ideal place to put this. However, it is right smack in the middle of that gas line, bike corridor. So that's one of the things that we're going to have to look at in terms of, are there constraints that keep us from, from encouraging growth in certain areas? And keep in mind that you're going to hear loud and clear from your constituents when we get rolling on this, that nobody's going to want to see a lot of new change and growth around them. It's just human nature. However, we depend on revenue to, to fund the quality school system, the quality fire service, quality sheriff's office, quality goods and county services. quality sheriff's office, quality goods and county services that we have, solid waste, whatever it may be. Hopefully, planning falls in there as quality. But that being said, we need to find places that are the more ideal places for us to push that growth or push that development. And that's what we're going to be looking at.
Correct.
Again.
The public meetings.
Yes.
Public input. Everybody needs to be there.
Yes. And last thing I'll say is, we're looking for, we're going to be, I'm looking to hire someone. I've got feelers out with the different organizations. For a lot of reasons, I need somebody with specific technical skills, including mapping skills, as well as planning chops, to help me. I'm also looking at trying to obtain a consultant to help us, and I'm actually speaking with one this Friday, to see what their timeline might be for getting on board and helping us if they could, and what their costs might be.
Is this real in with BP? Because you know I'm going to ask about it.
Yes. You can spell out.
Because that's one of your, that's one of your, yeah, that's one of your gateways up there, and that still looks trashy.
Yes, it does. It does. And all I can tell you is, we've turned that over for court action, and we're still looking for the folks, as best I can tell. I did tell you, I talked with one contractor that had apparently been contacted by that owner's insurance company, even though I can't get a hold of him. And apparently, they're taking bids on doing something with the property, so.
If you're lonely, thank you very much.
Hey, how long was that? I'm not done yet. How long was that? How long ago has that been? Because people are worrying me out.
About, about a week and a half, two weeks ago.
Okay.
No, no, no. You're talking about, the tornado was, it was about a year and a half ago.
A year and a half. But we're going to be on two years before we get this thing done.
Yes, in all likelihood, yes, sir.
Yeah.
We give people 12 months from the time of storm damage, but after that, in the spring, we started in earnest trying to pursue them, getting it cleaned up. And I did at least pass along to the contractor that was asking for, about bidding, that we were really getting beat up, and we needed some help. If they could pass that back to the owner, even if they wouldn't give me the contact.
Of the papers that we sent them, though, what are we sending them? Are we sending them something to take them to court, or?
Yes, I've already sent them notice of intent to pursue court action, and I've sent it to every address I can find.
Mr. Jones?
Tom, walk us through the process real quick about how this will finally be approved.
Well, the way the last one was approved, Jerry, I think you took my land use plan, but, the way the last one was approved, I'm sorry, the way the last one was approved was, we got the, we had public hearings. We had a process whereby we analyzed each section of the county, and then we had public hearings for input. We came up with a draft plan. We again went back to public hearings, and then after that, the planning commission adopted that. We stopped at the planning commission, as is our prerogative to do so, from the standpoint that that allows y'all to work a little bit more quickly and streamlined if, for some reason, Tesla comes in here with a SpaceX research project and it falls completely outside of the land use plan, and you don't want to have to stop until I'm in the land use plan to do it. City Lebanon, as a nearby example, they actually have their city council adopt the land use plan, but it's a double-edged sword. That means that their city council should live by that land use plan or could get sued if they don't. For you, it's a guide. For the planning commission who adopted it, it's a guide, although they ought to stick to it. For your staff's perspective, we take it as direction from the planning commission that they've advised us, this is what they want to see, and so we're going to stick pretty close to it in our comments.
Mr. Brees?
Do you know when the public meeting process is going to start?
No, I don't. I can't give you a hard and fast timeline. I'm working as quickly as I can on it. You know, initially, we were hoping for the first a year, but I'm having trouble getting consultants and on board, and I'm also having trouble, you know, in terms of reaching out in this employment environment to find somebody that I can, I can use. I'm hopeful that with graduation in the spring, if not before, I can get that employee, which I need over and above the land use plan.
Right. So do you think maybe in the spring, or is?
I hope so.
Okay.
I hope so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tom. Thank you, Mr. Jerry. Appreciate you. Mr. Goodall, any additions be added to the no real list? Can I have motion to approve a no real list?
Motion second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none at all in favor, say aye. Ethics Committee, one member here, ask you to confirm my appointment of the one member of that's committee. The appointment would be filled of vacancy created by the resignation of Commissioner Cindy Vannick. This appointment will run through September 22. I'd like to appoint Mr. Rick, Commissioner Rick Brown for that, if I hear a motion.
Mr. Gray?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none at all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
JACDB, position number three, need one commissioner you elect, one commissioner to serve for your term on position number three. I would like to recommend for your consideration, Commissioner Sonia Robinson.
Motion second.
Any discussion? Seeing none at all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then JACDB, position number 19, confirm appointment of a one-year term here for joint economic development would be Mr. Caleb Thorne, upon your recommendation.
Motion.
Any discussion? Seeing none at all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Report from the Leadership Management Committee, Commissioner Glover.
We met Tuesday at 5:00 PM upstairs on November 9th. The minutes will be in next month's packet.
Next month's packet. And Director's Report, Director Cooper.
Call volume is pretty close to last year, so we're maintaining those numbers at this time. As far as our COVID numbers, they're down in the 200s and maintaining. So again, I feel like here, we have that under control and can adapt if need to. As far as our call volumes, from last month, we did go from 99.8 on our ALS to 99.7, which is still, you know, maintaining a good rating. Also with that, I put in some agency data informational purposes for you to look at as we go through the next few months. Outside of that, that concludes my report.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How many have we lost this week, or do you know, Joey?
Two, I believe.
Since our last committee meeting?
Three.
No further.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Director Cooper, report from Law Enforcement Committee, Commissioner Rich.
No report.
And Sheriff Bryan, for the sheriff's report.
County Commissioners, your report's in your packet. The numbers are, actual calls for service are up a little bit. They tend to go up. You'll probably see them go up a little bit more in November and December and January. A lot of people's out and about, staying at home, different things, so you'll see when numbers go up, but they are up. Number of highest daily inmate population, I do want to look at that number. It's at 45. That's just 15 beds short of being full. So that's where we're at, and the numbers fluctuate between 400 and 450. So you've got employees out there working every day in a bad situation, bad environment to protect you and keep these people behind bars where they belong. We had a new thing on this report, and we've been doing it for a few months, but I do want to look at it here. About third one down, traffic enforcement locations. I don't think there's a commissioner in this room that I probably hadn't talked to about speeders and different things. I just want to get to the numbers of them, what calls we're getting, these are included some, now, these are just the one from Diane Weathers, I'm sorry. But, and Sue, Sue got part of it, though. But the numbers are always high. No, that's not saying we're out there 30 day, every day of the month. That's what, we get a complaint, we go focus on the day, a few days, and we have to go to other places, because we, I think, talked to Mr. Fields the other day about some, and it's just, it's an ongoing thing. Our growth is increasing the number of cars, or these subdivisions, cars are cutting through them, and that's one, I want to put that number on there to let y'all know that we are out trying to slow people down. The road commission, road work is, inmates are out on a daily basis. I mean, remind each and every one of you, it's getting cooler part of the year, and we'll have as much as we can, but if you have any areas that need focus right now, right now is the time to get them to us, so please do that. Unless there's any question, that concludes my report.
Mr. Gentry?
Yeah, Sheriff, on the state inmates, do we have any relief from that, from the state? Are they awful on their state presence still? How's that been worked out?
We're getting a few beds a month. Has it gotten better?
A little bit better.
I think the numbers are, they're working a little better with us right now than they used to. I can't say they've taken enough, but, you know, we're making phone calls every day, every other day to try to get state inmates booked. From here, I know Aaron don't like that, but it's.
Do we have any?
We try our best to get them out when they'll take them, yes.
Do we have any increase in the amount we get per inmate, or has it been stable?
In saying that, we get the regular amount of $39 a day, but in saying that, we are in the process of working through, they got a different, where we can get an extra $3 a day through some different programs where we put, we initiate. So we are working towards getting that extra, and $3 will make a big difference on the amount we're getting, on the number of inmates, state inmates we got that we can't get rid of. I want to get that straight, okay? No, I don't want nobody to think I'm holding state inmates in our jail because I want to.
I understand.
I do not. Now, I will say this, just, the jail, I didn't, I didn't mention this, it's, if y'all haven't been by there, it's going up. And I would ask that if anybody wants to, a grand tour while it's going up, it's pretty interesting what they're doing. I know a couple of yous already been up there, just give me a call, I'll give you a hard act, and we'll go walk through it. But it's, it's good to see it as it going up, and it's, it's a big project, and the construction companies moving right along, and they are ahead of schedule.
Hey, how many of those pods did they put in there, the ones that's sitting out on the street?
Blocked the road. But that, what he's talking about, the sales, they're not built with concrete, with the blocks anymore. They're, they're blocks. The sales come in there, they're already pre-made, they're steel sales, they've already got the beds, the toilets, every sinks, everything in them, and they stack them like blocks. And it's a sight to see, and y'all ought to come see it. I really wish y'all would. And all they do is hook them up in the back, just like, I felt like I was a kid with my building blocks.
Sheriff, you going to be there tomorrow?
Yes.
Concerned?
Yes. Yes, I'll be there before lunch, and then after that, I have to be in Franklin, but yes, swing by.
I'll be there when you get to work, somewhere between 10 and 12, right?
If you can get there before 6 o'clock in the morning, I guarantee you, I'll be there.
He only works a half a day on Tuesday.
You're talking about he does.
Yeah, yeah, right. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Sheriff. Report from Education Committee, Commissioner Stafford.
Mr. Chair, fellow commissions, the Education Committee met Thursday, November the 4th, 5:00 PM in upstairs conference room. If there are no questions, I move the minutes be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none at all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Director of Schools' report, Director Jeff Luttrell.
Mayor Hutto, you do have my report in the packet. Just want to hit just a few of the highlights, and then if you've got any questions. In our regular board meeting, met November 3rd, and you have the agenda items that we took action on. Under old business we did, the Board of Education went ahead and made face coverings optional in school buildings in light of the legislation that was passed, waiting to be signed into law, but that was signed into law this past week, so we're in compliance with that. Under new business, as you know, we had put out for the land RFP. Those bids came in, were open. We had two parcels of land, and a lot of communication after it was open, that there were some people that missed their opportunity. And in the spirit of wanting as many people to participate in this process as possible, I made the recommendation the board approve to reject those RFP bids. We have reissued the RFP, and that will be, they have to respond by November the 30th. We'll be opening those up in that process, of course, then. Hopefully, we'll have several parcels of land to look at, and we will rate those, score those on different aspects of what it will cost to build, and utilities that are available, and look at all that, and rate those, bring it back to the board for them to approve if they would like to push forward with that. And then, of course, at that point, we'll be back here talking to you. But I wanted to keep, give you an update, and I do think it was the right decision to get more, give more people an opportunity to think about how they would like to proceed with offering their land for possibility of schools. Also, just, we did something I want you to be aware of, and we know with staffing issues we're all having. Our substitute contract was due, came due, or would be up, December the 5th. It's not a time of the year for that contract to be up. We have had, they've worked tremendously hard, the company we're working with, but they're experiencing the same shortage finding subs as we are in our other positions. So we decided to enter into a co-op agreement for staffing services with them to get us through the end of the year. And then at that point, if we go through the budget process, we will be reevaluating our substitute program, whether we want to bid it out, outside sources, or possibly bring it back in-house. And we'll be looking at the cost of that, savings of that, if there's any, and, but more importantly, the possibility of us being the employer and working with those subs to keep them with us, and see if that might be a solution or it might not. We just got to work through it, but we did take care of that. Also, we did welcome Swaryn, our new board member, Ms. Melissa Lynn, that you chose. It was her first board meeting. She hits a job running, and she's going to do a great job and bring a lot to our board, especially in the area of elementary education where she has a significant background. So we're looking forward to her, what she's going to bring. Did have a good night of celebrations. Some things I want to mention academically. Our National Merit Scholarship semifinals, we had Anna Davidson from Atreet High School, Jackson Kirian from Green Hill High School, Parker Lovin from Wilson Central High School, and Will Stride from Wilson Central High School. And a lot of people don't know what National Merit Scholarship semifinalists means. It means they are top 1.25% students in the country, and they will be up now for hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of scholarships, and they do that through the testing program of free SAT scores. And so, very competitive nationwide, and we want to continue to expand that program and get more of our kids recognized and having that opportunity. Also, two of those students, we recognize them and their families. Jackson Kirian and Parker Lovin received a perfect score on ACT, 36. We just got those scores back. I don't even know what, it's a very small percentage that those folks have just entered into, and will open unbelievable doors for them going forward, not just for a college education, but a career education. These are the top, top students in the country. So we're proud of them, and we'd like to thank the teachers that worked with them, but also the parents. That doesn't happen with just, there's a lot of sacrifice and a lot of commitment on a lot of people's parts, and so we're proud of those students. Did want to mention, as you know, there's a lot of information we're hearing about the review of the State Education Funding Formula. I'm staying on top of that. I've attended a meeting virtual. We've been in communication with directors of schools all across the state. We'll be meeting again in December. I encourage you, and you have it in your packet, where you can go and make your comment, as, I would encourage you to do that. This is going to be interesting in the state of Tennessee as we go through this process. It would, basically, the BEP formula, the way I'm understanding it, we're looking at a new type of formula funding. There's a lot of questions. We all have a lot of questions. I will tell you, one of the things that I keep commenting every opportunity is that being a county of high-growth area, we should be considered by the state for, that should be part of the funding formula. And that is coming up a lot with some of us high-growth areas, that to hopefully, if there's some state funding available that could relieve the local body in some of these building projects. You know, Mayor Hutto, you helped me last month, and you showed me the amount of money that you have committed as a commission in the last 20 years, Wilson County, for capital projects. It's tremendous. I thank you, but we know that there's more to come. So I encourage you to get that information. There's a email address. Please, I need you, our county needs you, as a commissioner, to reach out and give your input on the funding formula and what we need locally, because as that gets, as this and what we need locally, because as that gets, as this formula gets drawn down and decide on how we're going to fund schools, it's going to be crucial that we give our input. With that, also, as you know, special sessions, legislative special session did pass the COVID bill as it relates to schools, and we're still working through that, but we are in compliance, we've made those, we went ahead and made those changes, not just on legislation, I was looking at the numbers, with where we were at, we're down to, I do not have today's numbers, but last week, 20,000, right at 20,000 students, we had about 24 cases, student cases. We've seen that trend in the last three weeks, so our numbers are down, and so we got all that lined up, but we will always follow our law, our state law, and work through that process as we continue into COVID. I do want to highlight just something that we're proud of, we have an ESL Welcome Center, and it's located the Adult Learning Center, and that's for our English second language students and their families. It works with, through Julie Harrison, who's our coordinator for ESL, it's a welcome center, and along with Sandy Anderson, who does our ISET testing, or the old GD equivalency. And this is a welcome center where those families and students can come in, it's an orientation process, lets them know how to get registered in our schools, and other options that they have available, and that has just been a tremendous asset, we're getting a lot of good work for families that are moving in here that need that assistance, and we're excited about that. But it is the Adult Learning Center, it's hours are from Tuesdays, 9:00 to 11:00, Thursdays, 1:30 to 3:30, that's the backside of ACT, and if you would like to visit that, they would love to have you, and let them come in there and see what they're doing as we work with our ESL students. Stoner Creek Elementary in West Wilson Middle, update, Stoner Creek Elementary works continuing, making progress, I just got a text just a little while ago, think they'll possibly pour some footers this week, pads in place, working on it, getting that down. If you've been by there, you go by there, you're going to see our floor joists, or all the joists is in, on site, we are, and they're doing a tremendous job, staying on top of trying to get our supplies months ahead of schedule, that's a challenge right now. But I think before long, we'll see that get out of the ground. Our portables, we're waiting on a few breakers to be able to use them, we're finishing up the ramps, but there is, believe it or not, breakers are a hard item to find right now, and so that's delayed us a little bit, but we're working every day, and I told them the other day, hey, I'll go pick them up if you'll tell me where they're at, because we need that, to be using those portables to give us a little relief. But I cannot say enough about Stoner Creek Elementary's administration, faculty, and also West Wilson Middle, and our high schools that are housing some of those students. It's not ideal, but it is working, and we're fortunate that we could do that the way we were able to do it. But we look forward to getting those portables and getting a little more space in that school. West Wilson Middle, update, we're still in design phase, we would hope to have a final plan in January, and be bringing that forth and looking at that project and see how we can get that going. We are still in touch with FEMA, Ms. Smith works with them on a pretty regular basis, and we're still holding out and think that there'll be some FEMA money to help us, but as you know, that is a reimbursement-type program, and it takes a lot of time, a lot of paperwork, but we do feel comfortable that there will be some help that will assist with that. As you know, we're off next week for Thanksgiving break for our students and our teachers, but not our 12-month employees, and I think everybody's looking forward to that, and just wish you a happy Thanksgiving, and if you got any questions, I'll be glad to answer them at this time.
Motion report be received and filed.
Commissioner Rich?
I was going to say, it may, it's first time in a long time, maybe the first time ever, you've got three county football teams still in the playoffs.
I forgot that, I promised I highlighted. Yes, that is, and that is exciting, you know, for, I'm an athletic guy, and that quarterfinal night is special, because after Friday night, there's going to be four teams in East Division, and we're hosting three of those games as county schools, and I don't think that's ever happened, I can't remember, and if you know anything about athletics and follow it, you get to semifinals, anything's happening, and it's exciting for communities that get to play for state championships or win one, and we still have three possibilities, somebody can knock that door down and bring it first football state title here, so it's exciting times, if it's not too cold, or just wrap up, it'll be worth your time to see the, at each of these schools, the spirit, the bands, the cheerleaders, the rabid fans, it's worth the price of a mission, and more importantly, what's important is to watch our kids achieve. In divided times, there's nothing better than athletics, it is the testament of how we can solve a lot of problems, and to see these kids come together with their coaches and their parents and their schools and their student bodies, supporting them, brings a lot of pride to Wilson County, and we wish them all the best Friday night. Thank you for...
That's what those indoor facilities will do for you.
We think it gave us a leg up, and, you know, I just talked to, I talked to a rival coach, another director of schools, and he pointed that out to me about 4:30, that we had called them, they had done it a few years ago, so obviously, it has helped.
Any other questions? All in favor?
We caught, we caught, we caught trouble in doing that, too, so when we first started talking about that indoor facility, we caught it, so now it's paying off, so there you have it.
Anybody else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you, Director Jeff. Report from Public Works Committee, Commissioner Weathers.
No report.
Ag Center Management, Commissioner Scruggs. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Animal Control, Commissioner Marlowe.
Animal Control met in regular session Thursday, November the 4th, 4:30, minutes are in your packet, I move they be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Audit, Commissioner Bernard.
No report.
Able Tax, Commissioner Walker.
Able TV Committee met Wednesday, November the 10th, in upstairs conference room, the minutes will be in next month's packet.
Developing Tourism, Commissioner Vanatta.
No report, but thank you to Jason Johnson for the great report he gave tonight.
Outstanding. Ethics, Commissioner Ash. Finance, Commissioner Gentry.
No report. I got some notes in here somewhere.
Okay, there is a, okay. Finance met October 18th in the upstairs conference room, the minutes are in your package, actually. I make a motion, we file them.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Health and Recreation, Commissioner Patton.
No report.
Insurance, Commissioner Ash. Judicial, Commissioner Glover.
Judicial met on October 18th at 6:30 PM in the Conference Room 1, move these be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Planning and zoning, Commissioner McFarland.
Mayor, excuse me, I'm sorry. We also met Tuesday, November 9th, upstairs conference room, they're going to be in the packet next time.
Thank you, sir, sorry I jumped a gun. Planning and zoning, Commissioner McFarland, no report. Redistricting, Commissioner Ash.
I got a motion to second, now any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Rules, Commissioner Gentry.
No report.
Urban Town Facility Board, Commissioner Scruggs. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Finance Directors' Report, Mr. Aaron Maynard.
Finance's report in your packet, I would point out, in the general fund, usually in October, we start to see property tax revenue come in, most of the time, tax notices go out in about the middle of October. This year, according to information I received, they didn't go out until about October the 26th, so you don't see much property tax in October, that's nothing to be concerned about, we'll see it November, December, January, and February. So, other things that I looked at here, your engineer review fees are already, you've already received 55% of what you budgeted, the register of deeds has already turned in 75.91% of what we budgeted. Hotel motel tax is at, in the Ag Center, is at almost 54%, so we had some, Jason talking about hotel motel tax earlier this evening, there's a lot of things that are trending in a positive direction, that's not to get too excited, I do love seeing what's going on in the Rural Debt Service Fund, it's over on page 7, we budgeted 3.2 million for the Rural Debt Service portion of sales tax revenue, it's received 1.9 million in the first four months of the year. So, there's great things to see there. I would bring your attention to something that I put on your desk, I'm not going to read a lot to you, I highlighted some stuff, it's really stemmed from a conversation I had with my parents, in addition to some conversations and some emergency management meetings and other conversations that we've had recently, but on November the 12th, this came out and said a record high, 4.4 million people, or 3% of workers, quit their job in September, according to the Labor Department's latest job openings and labor turnover survey released Friday. People left their jobs fastest in the southern region of the country. Quits increased the most in blah, 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 local and state government jobs. The Labor Department reported 10.4 million job openings in September, consistent with previous months, with the largest increases in health care, social assistance, state and local government, excluding education, wholesale trade, and information roles. As of September, there were seven unemployed workers for every 10 job openings, a record low. The largest gaps in openings versus available workers remain in health care, transportation, and warehousing jobs that require in-person work, and where the risk of contracting COVID-19 remain high, Pollock says. And finally, you're seeing an economy where leaders have rushed to adapt by raising wages, Pollock says, and followers slower to adapt due to regulation or institutional arrangements will be under enormous pressure to make changes to catch up. So this is now being called, as you know, the media names everything, this is now being called the Great Resignation, if you haven't heard that term before. And so, I just want you to know that we're not alone, you can drive up and down any street in this county and see what's taking place. So, I just wanted to give you that tonight, and that concludes my report, unless you have any questions for me.
Sir?
I got a motion.
No, sir. Not unless it's your request personally, sir.
I do have one question.
I got a motion to second, Commissioner Stafford.
I do have one question, is this 3.75 with the radio system upgrade, is that a part of the ARP money, or that's something that we actually budgeted?
We brought it out of the general fund to pay for, out of the general fund, we will submit a request for reimbursement from ARP funds, which I fully believe will be granted on the radio system.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because it looked like to me that the numbers is going down on the general...
Understand, and I want to make perfectly clear, and if we didn't make this perfectly clear from the beginning, then I want to doubly apologize, because the only thing out there right now is still an interim final rule, there is no final rule, okay? So everything that we've done, we've done on advice of experts, but until it's actually blessed, we don't know.
I just want to make sure, because that's a, I mean, I know we got to do it regardless, that's a lot of money out of our general fund, so...
It definitely is, yes, ma'am.
Mr. Jones?
No, no, we got the first payment, 700,000, whatever it was, no, we have not heard anything about the 200,000 that we appealed.
He said it may be a while.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Blue report be received and filed.
We'll do it again, all in favor, say aye. Report from Budget Committee, Commissioner Marlowe.
In your packet, you'll find minutes for November 4th and October the 18th, if there's any questions, I move they be received and filed.
Second, got a motion to second, any discussion? On both sets, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolutions now, Commissioner Marlowe.
Resolution 21-11-2, to adopt a realignment redistricting plan of voting districts of Wilson County.
Second.
Got a motion to second, any discussion? Commissioner Stafford.
Yes, sir, once more, I'm going to have to vote no on this resolution, because my constituents are not satisfied with the results of it, so in their honor and their strong request that I vote no, just wanted to make it known and make sure it's in the records, minutes that I will be voting no on this, upon the recommendation of my constituency.
Any other comments or questions? Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 21 yes, 4 no, resolution passes, continue.
Resolution 21-11-3, establishing scene constable zones.
Motion to approve.
Now here's a second, got a second, any discussion? Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 24 yes, 1 no, resolution passes.
Resolution 21-11-4, establishing road commission zones.
Motion to approve.
I got a motion to second, now any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Keith? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 24 yes, 1 no, resolution passes.
Resolution 21-11-5, establishing school board zones.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 4 yes, 1, 1 no, excuse me, 1 no, resolution passes.
Resolution 21-11-6, to amend the budget and appropriations resolutions to make an appropriation from capital projects fund to animal control.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Weathers? All hearts and minds good with your vote? He's absent. All hearts and minds good? All in favor, say aye.
Has money on it. It's recorded, yeah.
Got you, 24 yes, 1 abstaining, resolution passes.
A resolution 21-11-7, to amend the budget and appropriations resolutions by approving Wilson County Board of Education Budget Amendment 2022.05.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Gentry? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 23, pass. Continue.
Resolution 21-11-8, to amend the budget and appropriations resolution to make an additional appropriation from general fund to finance.
Any discussion? Commissioner Kurtz.
Mayor, just point of order, I don't understand Commissioner Ash abstaining when he's not here, am I missing something?
Absent. Any other questions? I'm sorry. Ain't no big deal. Okay, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. He's a little out of the weather. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 23? 23, 1 no, 1 absent, resolution passes.
Resolution 21-11-9 to amend the budget and appropriations resolution for line item transfer to Expo Center Fund 124.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Walker? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 24 yes, 1 absent.
Resolution 21-11-10 to amend the budget and appropriations resolution to make an additional appropriation from the Ag Center Fund into Ag Center.
Got a motion in the second, any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 24 and 1, resolution passes.
Resolution 21-11-11 to amend Resolution Number 21-10-20.
Now here's second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Keith and Mr. Dow. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 3 yes, 1 abstain, and 1 absent, resolution passes. Any old business to come before this body? Any new business? I need one more motion. We are adjourned, thank you so much.